Call to order the Ashland Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, February 22nd. We'll start with an invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for our city today, and we ask your Holy Spirit to come into our chambers and preside over our meeting. We ask for your divine wisdom on this Board of Mayor and Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions in the best interest of our city and its citizens. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those that attend today. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
And stand, henceforth, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have motion to receive and file the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Receive and file the minutes?
Some move.
Second.
I don't know if we have any, but all in favor. Hearings and reports. Commissioners, if you'll let me start, just want to welcome everybody here today. We just came from a dedication at our Riverfront Park that was pretty important to so many in this community that was, that have had family members or they themselves were employed by AK Steel or Armco, including some members of this commission. But I just want to give a special thank you to the Smith family for their dedication and commitment. Mel Smith specifically was an instrumental player in making sure that these foundational blocks from the furnace ended up over at our Riverfront Park. And unfortunately, Mel passed away, but symbolically, I think importantly, we were able to dedicate these blocks on his birthday, which is today. So I think that's pretty special. And with that, I want to thank our Parks Department, our friends at Speedy Signs who worked on getting the signage together, and of course, our city team for making it happen. So with that, we'll switch over to Commissioner Good.
I just want to welcome everybody. I just want to echo Mayor Perkins' sentiments. It was a great day for the Smith family over there and for the dedication of those monuments. There's a lot of AK retirees over there that I got, I got to talk to, and you need to go down to the walking trail and check that out. Secondly, we've had, Citizens Academy has been going on every, every Tuesday, and I got to be a part of it last Tuesday, and we went to wastewater treatment plant, the water distribution, the water plant, and it was an eye-opener. I mean, for, still for me, there's 15 people involved, and it's very informational. And this week, I think, is the fire department. Is that correct, City Manager? And I encourage everybody to get on board with this the next time it's around. I think there's 15 people signed up this time. We went, many of us went to the Fire Department Recognition Banquet at the, at the hotel. It was very, very impressive of the heroics and the recognition that a lot of our firefighters had last weekend. Lastly, the CB Knuckles Museum fundraising dinner is this Saturday at the museum from seven to 11:00, and I encourage everybody to attend. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Spriggs.
One of these days, I'll get to go first, so I can...
We'll make a note, and it'll be next time. I just go from one end to the other.
You can go what you wish for.
That's right. Well, I want to echo what Mari said, the Fireman's Appreciation Dinner was just amazing, a great venue this year. It was good to hear all of those stories, and some I hadn't heard, and it was just good to see these brave men running toward danger, hearing the stories. It's pretty amazing what they do. So I want to thank the Fire Chief and everybody that put, put that on. It was, it was wonderful. Also, with regard to Armco, I mean, I salute that, those men and women at Armco who gave so much to our town, to our country. It's very historic, and if you haven't been down there, I'm sure most of you have, but it's pretty amazing and very interesting. I had a lot of questions. So I just wanted to say one other, one other thing. I want you to keep an eye on this House Bill 509 that's not up for vote yet, but if this thing passes, it will overturn 50 years of Open, of Open Records Act that we have here in Kentucky. It will completely eviscerate the public right to know more basic things about what your elected officials are doing in your name. So I urge you to keep an eye on this, and if it, when it does come to, call your representative and tell them to vote against that, as your right to know what your government is doing, state and local. So keep an eye on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Blanton.
Well, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. The, the Academy attended the last two, and, and just a fantastic event, and really appreciate the citizens who are, are willing to come and spend their, their evening every week for that. You know, transparency, I think we're getting to the point, the point of time where transparency is a word that'll be used a lot, but to me, it's an action, not just a buzzword, and that event is transparency in action. And I mean, they get to talk to the operators working in our city, and it's just an excellent event, so thank you, and thanks to the staff. HR, y'all are doing a great job with that. Thank you. Firefighters Dinner was, was great, as usual. Appreciate them. It was at the Delta, very, very nice this year, so of course, we appreciate our, our Fire Department and all they do for us. Last thing about the, the Armco AK event, you know, that's, that's something that is obviously our history, but for a lot of people, it's, it gets to be emotional, too, when you think about that, and you think about, you know, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that. And, you know, my dad and I, we talk two or three times a week, even still, about stories that he and I both have from it. And we lost our grandpa last year, and he was the plant mailman, and my great-grandpa worked there, too, and, you know, but something that's really neat that I talked to my dad about, he, he retired from the BO furnace after 40 years and, and got me my job there working, started my career. He talks a lot about how important it was for them, and how, you know, how important, how important it was for our family and everybody in the area, but how important it is to recognize the future as well. And, and obviously, we're always going to push to have companies, or whether it's a plant or whatever it is, but also, we've got to get innovative, too, and he reminds me of that, and I think it's so cool to have somebody who, you know, made his life there, sacrificed so much, and, and to work there, be the one telling me that. So it's a, it's a really cool thing and, and a reminder to keep going with what we're doing. So appreciate that, and thank you.
Okay. Mr. Clark.
My turn. Everything's been said. No, I want to make sure that I publicly say also how appreciative I am of the history of Armco and AK. And I, and I said it over there, you know, I was, I was fed from that mill, too, and my family was here because of that, and, and I think honoring that history is paramount. But as I stood in the Riverfront Park, Pogue Landing Park...
Pogue Landing Park, yes.
As I stood there today, it made me really reflect on how far we've come in such a short amount of time, and how long we sort of lived in the decline of AK and Armco, and, and we collectively, city, this commission, said, "We're not going to do that anymore." And I'm so thankful for all of you for being those people, city staff as well, being those people who, who stepped out of that shadow and are really making this a place where we can bring the next Armco, AK Steel, and, and all of the work that's going into making sure that that happens. Obviously, we're not going to recruit a company to a place where people don't want to live.
That's right.
And I think we're making great strides in making this a place where people want to live. So thank you.
Well said.
And I, and I'll just further expand on those comments from Commissioner Clark. Again, we have a lot of folks that ask us, what, what's AK, or what's, what's going to happen at AK? What's going to happen at Armco? What's going to happen here or there? We, those are all private property, but there is a public interest. And it's, the city has been actively engaged with Cleveland Cliffs from day one in multiple ways, through our economic development, also through our city management team for the environmental cleanup of those sites. Why? Because they can't be viable unless they're cleaned up. So we're appreciative to Cleveland Cliffs consistently meeting with us about every three months. Yes. Every three months, I'm on that call, city manager's on that call, others are on that call, where we talk about the issues that we're currently facing, they're facing, and, and they're keeping us updated so that we can ensure that property does, in fact, get cleaned up as promised, so that we can see something else grow from that site, mainly grow jobs. So just want that to be made clear in case anybody was wondering if anything was happening. There is indeed not just work of clearing land like you see if you drive out there. They're actually working on mitigating a lot of environmental issues, which we're very, very appreciative of. All right.
And everybody knows how slowly that moves.
Yes.
Exceedingly slow.
Well, you don't want to rush when it comes to the environment.
That's right.
We don't want to disturb anything that could possibly be potentially an issue, and I really, you think about companies stepping up, Cleveland Cliffs has stepped up and made sure that they honored their commitment to us as a community, and I think we can see around us other companies that didn't do that. And so we are, as a body here, very appreciative of what they're doing. All right. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be remiss if I didn't give another round of applause to Mel Smith. There's a lot of coordination that went on with both the monuments and also the ingots, the ingot molds, and if, again, if it weren't for Mel, it wouldn't have happened. You all know, when you try to coordinate, things fall apart, and then they come back together, and Mel would not let us forget that. And so I just want to say, if Mel hadn't have done that, they would not be there today. And to reemphasize what the elected official said, so many people won't know what that piece of land was because they didn't live it like I think every person in this room has. So having that there is just historically, just historically really, really important. One other thing, I think we've mentioned this before in public meetings, but the remediation that's being done on the Coke plant is in accordance with the federal EPA Region Four, so it's not just Cleveland Cliffs saying, "Hey, we think this is what's good." It is in accordance with that, and to the mayor's point, we do have that quarterly briefings. They're, again, when you use the word transparent, they're very transparent. We have good two-way communications. I feel very good about that personally and professionally, feel very good about that process. I think Commissioner Clark will talk, and Mr. Pullman and Eden can speak about the fact that the state is very aggressive in trying to market those properties. They realize what those properties mean to this community, so I always want to hit those points. Slide, please. Wow, that was quick.
I know.
So if you weren't out there, that's today. And to Commissioner Clark's point, I mean, you look at underneath that bridge just five, six years ago, and that was just, it's just a wasteland of nothingness over there. And so, you know, you hear a lot of things about what we could do down there. Well, there's a lot of limitations with the rail and the, the river and the Rising River and all that, and I think it's, we've really hit a nice sweet spot down there and appreciate all the efforts, both from staff and also from volunteer citizens who've been down there doing cleanups. There's a lot of, a lot of sweat equity in that land down there. Next, please.
Citizens Academy, this has already been discussed. It has been spectacular. We will, so I think I mentioned before, we're a learning organization. We put this out for 15 because we want it to be intimate. Unfortunately, we had some people that signed up, didn't make it the first night, didn't make it the second night, said they were going to be there, so we're going to expand that next time because we suspect there'll be instances like that again. There's a hardcore group of nine or 10 that are in this. Next slide, please. This is what we've accomplished. We're, we're about halfway through. As was already mentioned, we'll do AFD next weekend. One of the things we have learned is that starting at six and going to eight is a little bit too late. Two weeks ago, we held that group over an extra half hour, and that was not, not what they signed up for. Everybody appreciated the information, but we're really trying to stay on schedule to honor people's times. We'll be starting at 5:30 next week at the main fire station. Next, please. Something I'd like to point out, if you could please just look at some of these statistics. We, we took on the garage a couple of years ago, and we, we knew that there was a need for camera systems up there because nefarious kind of stuff goes on in, on a regular basis up there. We had an estimate to get the camera system done, and it came in, you see there at $178,000. The total cost, our city crew did this, and the total cost is $32,900. To put in perspective, 2,500 feet of conduit, 4,000 feet of wire, 338 hours of manpower, you can see the cost there, and you see the cost breakdown. But I would like the following individuals to stand up, please. Major Connolly, is he here? Lieutenant Adam Daniels is not here today, unfortunately. From Public Services, Matt Maynard and Kevin Burks. And did I miss anybody that was part of this? So, oh, Jesse, thank you. Public Service Officer Jesse. Jesse, I don't know your last name, you're just Jesse. Jesse Webb. Just Jesse, so. Matt and Kevin were particularly thrilled to be here today because they really like public recognition. Thank you all very much. It's just a great effort, and I thought it was important to publicly recognize.
Yeah.
I think that's the last slide. Oh, Dave Travis. Where are you, Dave? Stand up, Dave.
There he is.
If you do go over there, if you're parking in the garage, you'll see these numbers, it kind of puts into perspective what they did, and the quality of the work, even to a novice like me looking at that, the quality of the work is just spectacular. All the camera angles that we get will be definitely great for prevention. As you all know, we don't have the manpower to have somebody sit on cameras 24 hours a day, but it is for prevention. If we get, if we catch somebody, then we can prosecute them and hopefully send that message that this is, you know, caring for our, our stuff in the city is really important. And I think it's something that this community, we can continue to, you know, to work on, getting away from graffiti and all that kind of stuff that just really damages our community, so. Mayor, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Now it's time for public participation. Anyone with a comment or request may come to the podium and address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. Personal attacks, obscene, or threatening language will not be tolerated. Presentations are limited to five minutes. Only one speaker is permitted per subject. No action will be taken at this meeting. Those with comments are asked to fill out an inquiry form and leave it with the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department. At this time, would anybody like to come forward? We welcome you.
Good afternoon. I'm Evan Lewandowski, and I live at 3214 Park Street, and I'm here today to try to get the commissioners in the city of Ashland to try to change a couple of ordinance on the golf carts. I'm the first and only one that I know of that's legally permitted to drive on the streets of Ashland. The first thing is, we're required to have lights and everything, and my cart's got everything your automobiles have and more, and I think we should be able to be allowed to drive at night. I mean, I even got backup lights. The second is, allow us to cross these streets that you don't want us driving on, at a 90-degree if possible, or at least adopt what the state has for ATVs crossing just the two lanes, crossing the two-lane roads. And the state has a law, 189.515, that says, line seven, paragraph A, except for off-highway vehicles describing KRS 189 dot 281, a person may operate an all-terrain vehicle on any two-lane public highway in order to cross the highway. In crossing the highway under this paragraph, the operator shall cross the highway at as close to a 90-degree angle as possible, like straight across. If you can't, as practical and safe, and shall not travel the highway for more than two tenths of a mile, or the coach, coach scooter understand this, 352 yards. But that, that's all I, all I want to change right there. I mean, we have insurance, we're required to have insurance. I'm landlocked. I can't, I, I mean, I can't cross Belmont. I can't, I'm getting old, and I'm retiring in a year and a half, and I would, I would like to be able to go cross these roads and go see family or friends. I might want to go jump in Todd's pool. You know what I mean? Or have a burger with him or something. But, or go shopping at food fair, go to Clark's, go to Family Dollar, you know, the way gas prices are, it just seems, makes sense to me to.
Well, we appreciate your time and coming to, to us and letting us know about this, and I'm going to ask, with the commission's blessing, that we look at this with city staff and also defer to our, our good friend Todd here, who you may jump in his pool later, and we'll see. But thank you.
Warm up a little bit, I think.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward at this time? We're glad you are back.
Okay. On Saturday, the 24th, 2024, there's going to be a veterans forum at First Christian Church. I don't know if there's going to be food there or what, but...
That won't be the only reason you're going.
Find out for me if there's food.
I'm going to eat before I go, so.
You're going to eat before you go? Okay.
Yeah, anyway.
It's a deal breaker.
Any veteran in here wants to learn about benefits, appeals, education, employment, veteran centers, and state veteran cemeteries. I know a little bit about cemeteries, but I think Frank Key's going to be there and talk, so anyway. Anyway, I was asked to pass these out, and so can I put one of these down there? Okay. Also, I was out at Veteran Cemetery Wednesday. Right now, we have 2,000 veterans buried there. Unbelievable, so thank you all.
Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing up that event. The city manager and, and our elected staff, our elected body is, is aware of this event. No, but it's important that you share that with the community, and we appreciate that, and yeah, thank you so much.
Mike, what time's it start?
One to three. Oh, nine.
Thank you.
Nine to 2:30.
And Mike, it's been a bit since I looked at this, but I think this is sponsored by the State Department of Veteran Affairs. But for those of you who haven't seen, there's a wide variety of topics on there that are appropriate for veterans.
Thank you, buddy. Appreciate it.
First Christian? Is it First Christian?
Yeah.
Yes.
See if there's a lunch voucher attached.
Anybody else like to come forward at this time? Toss a coin.
So Mike Maynard, 1819 Eloise Street. It's been three months now since we've received opioid funding from the city, and so figured it was appropriate to kind of let you know what difference has it made, because that's the whole thing. The money was distributed to different agencies within the city to help make a difference with, with the, with the issues. And so with that money, one of the plans that we had, we wanted to hire a peer support and recovery coach for our place. We utilize a lot of peer supports from other agencies, off and on and as needed, but having somebody that could be there at the mission all the time, we thought was critical. And so within her first week, she helped two, two of our neighbors get into inpatient rehab within the first week. So that, that's, that's the immediate impact of what this does. Of those two folks, one, he has already graduated, secured a job with TKT down in Wortland, and has applied for HUD also. The other one, she is still in inpatient and hadn't seen any of her babies that she had had, but is now getting visitation, is on track to getting housing and getting a job and getting her kids back. And so if we can get folks the help they need, then they can recover and they can be restored. And so, so just in her first few... And so, so just in her first few months, so we've had nine that's been admitted into inpatient rehab, and we got one guy that's sitting in the office right now. We're just waiting on the approval from insurance so that we can take him. So, that'll be 10 just in the first three months with having her there. One of the things, though, is that, you know, folks have to want to go. And so, you can't order them to go and it help, you can't convince them to go and it help, and you can't debate them. And so, the thing is, is that build relationships, build trust, and just love them, you know, until they're ready. Sometimes, though, the love doesn't look very compassionate. And so, sometimes people are very self-destructive, and they just can't get through to themselves to want to get help. And so, sometimes, the most compassionate thing that we can do is to help them hit bottom, to reduce the amount of time that they're going to use. Because every day someone uses is a day they could die. And so, six of the folks that we were working with that were in that position, that were self-destructive, probably on a path to overdosing, those six are sitting in jail right now. And that's the safest place that they can be. And they will be offered drug court or inpatient rehab along with their sentencing. So, sometimes, that's the best thing we can do. So, 16 folks that we've been working with in three months are not using drugs at this And so, besides that, a lot of folks, we just, we're, we continue to work with after they become sober. And so, two of our folks, that they are almost complete with drug court, they created Narcotics Anonymous Group that meets twice weekly in our neighborhood. And so, that creates an opportunity to meet other folks who need help. It also provides a place for accountability and support. And, and so, that is just, and it's something that somebody who grew up in that neighborhood, struggled with drugs, wanted to do something to help the folks that they grew up with. And so, it's making a huge impact. Six of the folks that we've been working with, they didn't go to inpatient, but they used intensive outpatient and medically assisted treatment. And six of those have stayed sober. We've helped them get into peer support certification, they've passed. And all six of those folks were hired and are working in peer support in different agencies throughout here. So, King's Daughters, Pathways, The Drop, Mother's Journey, and Greenup, and a lot of other places. Another, another one that used medically assisted treatment, she got a job and she started college. Another one that used drug court and medically assisted aid treatment, she's got a job and, and used inpatient. And another one that used inpatient rehab, now they are working. And so, we couldn't do this without all the, the recovery partners that we have here. And so, and it's a lot. We work with Raimi Regroup, we work with Pathways, we work with ARC, OVP, AIM, King's Daughters, Crossroads, Fresh Start, Contemplations, Groups Recover Together. There are so many folks that help make all this possible. But having the money from the opioid supplement to hire a peer support and recovery coach, that's what helps make the difference. So, just wanted to give you an update in the first three months, what we were able to do with the money you invested with us, and just thank you.
Mike, we continue to thank you for your transparency and commitment to informing the board of the success that you're having with this money, because we know the struggle is real here, and there's so many that you have to build trust with before they'll, they'll get help, and I think it takes time. But to hear that you've made a change with 16 people so quickly, honestly, three months sounds like a long time, but it's not when you're having to build relationships to get people help. So, it's hard work, and we thankful to your, your team and you specifically for making a positive change for these people. Appreciate it.
Money well invested.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you don't mind, I'll just have one comment, and I say this every time you give us an update. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I personally can express how grateful I am for you and your organization, and I, every time I, every time you speak, and I, I say it over and over, how do we, the city of Ashland, deal with these major issues? We put it in the hands of the people that can actually do the work. And I appreciate you doing it and doing it so well. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Would anybody else like to come forward? I think I know who it is. Welcome back.
Hello, hello. My name is Mark Boykin. I live at 2108 Lexington Avenue, and I have a little speech here, and then after that, I have an invitation to an event that we're doing on Saturday. Commissioners, I am concerned about the lack of a public rental registry. Many of you own and rent properties, and when you do, do you register with the city as a business? Is your contact information readily available for code enforcement or for the police? How can they reach you if issues arise? When y'all first adopted the rental registry, Community and Economic Development Director Pullum noted that the PVA was occasionally incorrect, making it hard to send out notices to the correct location or arrange a discussion with the owner. APD echoed this complaint, identifying tax bills and PVAs inadequate for this purpose. In this city, we require registration from food truck owners, but not landlords. Renting property involves expenses and responsibilities, repairs, co-compliance, tenant issues. You earn profit, same as any business. So, isn't this a business, being a landlord, you know, requiring registration and public accountability? Currently, the city does not charge for registering a rental property, making it a sweetheart deal that any business paying the minimum $100 annual business registration renewal fee would love to have. Landlords simply need to be contactable by the city and the public. We understand concerns about sacred property rights, but other businesses register, they meet this obligation, and you can look up any business in the state, so why not businesses providing the one thing that everybody needs, which would be housing, right? If there's a house fire or a shooting, some utilities might get turned off or shut down, like gas or electric. Those things aren't going to get turned back on until an owner is spoken with and notified. And there are numerable reasons why the city needs to be able to reliably contact landlords. Without a registry, some landlords thrive unregulated, while others pay taxes and follow rules, and that creates an unfair market that harms citizens. When asked by Commissioner Spriggs, when you guys originally adopted the rental registry, Chief Todd Kelly gave a response to the question, "Do you find that this occurs mostly with absentee landlords?" He responded essentially with a question that was hard to hear on mic, but, Spriggs, your response essentially was, "So, it's a big mix." And that was consistent with the response that was given. There is no clear dividing line between responsible and negligent landlords. Any landlord can become negligent in their responsibilities. I mean, who hasn't had their life disrupted in the last three years? It's the city's responsibility to regulate the market so that tenants and other property owners aren't harmed by irresponsible individuals. Landlords claim privacy, but they're placing tenants in our neighborhoods, and that impacts everybody. Tenants deserve to know who they need to contact to talk to somebody who's controlling the living circumstances of somebody who owns a property, or, you know, somebody who's living in a property. And the public deserves to know who is responsible for a given property. Even one blighted property affects the neighborhood, and we are well past just one blighted property in most of Ashland's neighborhoods. So, a public rental registry benefits everybody. It benefits the city, which would be able to understand the rental market and respond effectively to chronic nuisance properties. It affects the public and benefits the public, which would have reliable housing information during the housing crisis, and, you know, it would benefit responsible landlords, who would avoid code enforcement fees due to lack of contact, the inability to contact them, leading to, you know, late fees essentially. It would allow them to gain a fair market for renting, and they would also give them free advertising for available units. Targeting specific landlords with code violations is just a stopgap solution. We need a comprehensive solution for safer housing. All landlords need to register with the city. Going back to when y'all voted the rental registry into law, Commissioner Goot, you said, y'all, as commissioners, you get these calls all the time from neighborhoods that say, "This is going on, this activity is going on, what are you going to do about it? What can you do about it?" And Mayor Perkins, you said the same thing, too, a very similar thing. Commissioner Clark asked, "Do we have the manpower to do this? Are we able to maintain and track rental properties with our current manpower? And if not, we need to make sure that we have the adequate staff to do it." And I repeat that same demand today. We could take the savings from the parking garage, and we could apportion that to said. We would only need to apportion about $130,000, but we have $145,000 and, I guess, 96 bucks too, so why not, right? The flyers are appreciated, the flyers that are included in the water bill currently now. And it's, it's a big step, it's a great step in the right direction to compliance for all the landlords in the city, but it is not sufficient. I urge you guys to consider the benefits of a comprehensive public rental registry. Now, regarding the event that we have on Saturday, we know that we have let you guys know many times about our upcoming Community Breakfast at the Cavalry Episcopal Church, and that's Saturday at 10:00 AM. Josh told us he's been invited six different times. Clearly, we want you all to be there. As of now, we have 60-plus attendees signed up, four candidates for commissioner, church leaders, nonprofit leaders, including Mike Maynard, statewide housing advocates, and everyday people who are your constituents, and they're planning on being there. I'm running out of time here, but we've heard you say time and time again that housing is a priority for this body of commissioners. This is an opportunity to show us, your constituents, that you really mean this. There are greedy politicians in our state government trying to make homelessness a crime by passing House Bill 5, and is that what we want in our state, in our community, during a housing crisis? To throw more people in jail because they can't afford a place to call home? When most of us are one medical disaster away from losing our homes? We should come together on Saturday to denounce this bill and discuss housing solutions that we deserve and need here in Ashland. Kentucky People's Union is working in coalition with partners across the state to improve housing conditions, but it's not just statewide or federal governments that need to take action. It's this group of people in this room. Let's come together to fight for a community where everyone has a safe place to live. And I hope I'll see you all Saturday at 10:00 AM at Cavalry Episcopal Church.
All right. Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward at this time?
My name's William Reeves, 207 Providence Hill Drive, Apartment 90. The last time we talked, we given the information that the notice was sent out in the water bills for the rental registry. I've asked everybody I know, and they said, "I've never seen anything like that. I get my bill electronically." Was that not included in the electronic bill?
I don't think we did send it in the, I know, I didn't discuss it with staff, so we had only mailed it out.
But you know, was it sent out?
Pardon?
Was it sent out?
I believe it's been sent out. Tony Michel, do you know if that's been done?
There's not the capability in electronic bill, we would have to get time envelopes and send it out that way.
No, I meant on the, but on the hard copies.
The hard copies, Casey does have them, and she may be putting them in her bills that they have now.
That, sir, that delay was on me. There was something that the, the intent was, probably two meetings ago when I'd mentioned that, and, and I personally dropped the ball on that with the staff, so about a week and a half ago.
Just trying to follow up for you.
But thank you.
And one other thing I want to give you all is the opportunity for a fresh view. If you would like to come see what's going on downtown with the streetscape, go over to my office, I'm in the 11th floor of the Community Trust Bank Building, you get a wonderful view. It's amazing what they're doing out there with their bricks on the sidewalks and things like that. I had no idea that was even part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Would anybody else like to come forward at this time? Hearing none. Counsel, all business.
Item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract for services between the city of Ashland and Lineback Funkhauser, Inc., in the amount of $457,010 for various professional environmental and engineering services associated with the community-wide Brownfield Assessment Grant provided by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Some move.
I'm intrigued by the $10, but, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Ashland and service pump and supply in the amount of $42,390 for repair of the VAC truck for the Department of Utilities Division of Wastewater Collection.
Some move. Second.
Was this truck recently purchased?
No, this was the 2014 truck, just to replace the pump in that. We expect that the extended life on it to be another 15 to 20 years as a result of this.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Ashland and service pump and supply in the amount of $65,704 for the raw water intake, pump removal, and spare reinstallation for the Department of Utilities Division of Water Production.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving change order number one between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Bobby's Mulch extending the contract for the demolition and clearance of 2824 Main Street to March 17, 2024.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion?
The neighbors applaud this.
Yeah.
They're very priesthood.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving change order number one between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Bobby's Mulch extending the contract for the demolition and clearance of 4013 Skidmore Street to March 17, 2024.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the job description for the position of water, wastewater operator intern in the Department of Utilities Divisions of Water Production and Wastewater Treatment of the Classification and Compensation Plan as adopted by ordinance number 31, series of 2023, as previously amended.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion?
I'm very excited about this program.
Nice story in the paper today about it.
To get interns here and, and get people invested early. I think it's a great idea.
And hopefully, they'll come to work here.
Yep.
We met one on, for the academy, at the water plant that was, she, or she was out of the program from ACTC.
Yes, yes.
Great. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a lease agreement between the city of Ashland and Acme Auto Leasing LLC for the leasing of vehicles used for special investigations for the Ashland Police Department.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, and commissioners, Mayor, you'll notice this is a rereading of a previous item that was on the agenda. There was a procedural issue that came up upon review, and Mr. Moore asked that we put this back on to, to readdress it. You basically, the applicable procedure is you pick it up at the area where the issue arose, so that's why it's back on at this second reading level.
What was the issue?
Uh, my understanding is the, there were three of you all were here, I believe, and I think the mayor pro tem may have voted on an item, and he was holding the chair, and it simply needed to be, simply needed to be an issue of, he needed to pass the gavel to second a motion, or something of that nature. I believe that was essentially what it was. Item H, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "In ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky amending the authorized positions list to add one public service officer in the Department of Police of the Classification and Compensation Plan as adopted by ordinance number 31, series of 2023, as previously amended.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Consent agenda.
A resolution of the city of Ashland, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of February 22, 2024.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We are finally on to new business.
Item A, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, Inordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Womack Excavating LLC for the Purchase of All Labor Materials, Equipment, and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris of 3005 Lookout Street in the Amount of $3,000 for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Someone.
Second.
Any discussion?
Where's Lookout Street?
It's right by where... yeah, it's right there where what used to be the convenience store.
Ken's.
Ken's, yeah. So, if you turn right there on that side street and go...
Oh, okay.
You can go around the right up the hill.
You go up, and you can't look out anymore.
Look out!
There was a dog issue up there. That's the only reason I know.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, Inordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with the Boyd County Council on Aging, Inc., the Subrecipient of $9,000 from the 2023 Program Year Community Development Block Grant for the Replacement of One HVAC Unit at the Ashland Senior Center by General Heating and Air Conditioning, Inc.
Someone.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, Inordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with Neighbors Helping Neighbors, Inc., the Subrecipient of $102,500 from the 2023 Program Year Community Development Block Grant for the Replacement of Six HVAC Units at the Neighborhood by General Heating and Air Conditioning, Inc.
Someone.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, Inordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland and Boyd County Sanitary Landfill, Inc., Rumke, for the Suitable Landfill Location with a Receipt and Disposal of Compacted Garbage and Refuse Rubble and Rubbish Collected by the City of Ashland for a Period of One Year in an Amount Not to Exceed $21.24 per Ton for the Department of Public Services Division of Sanitation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I hope this doesn't include our recycling, of course, right?
No.
But I mean, I see stuff out on the curb all the time that could go to recycling. I just, again, want to encourage our citizens to recycle, because we get charged for this when it goes to the landfill, and it's not good to have things go to the landfill.
And Commissioner, just to reemphasize, we've said this before in the meetings, but we are not near capacity.
Yeah. I'm down there... I mean, I can't tell you how much this saves me from putting stuff on the curb, so please, recycle. That's all.
Okay.
Over and out.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, Inordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute the First Amendment to the Agreement Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Boyd County Sanitation District Number Four Adopted by Ordinance Number 57, Series of 2018.
Someone.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this when we play the Halla Dooja Chorus?
Just for the edification of the community, SD4 has asked... there's a lot to this. So, SD4 has asked for a slight increase in what they contribute to our system and so for us to treat, and we're very happy to do that. SD4 has also decided to not pursue their own wastewater treatment plant and will be pulling a... getting this removed, their request for a new facilities control plan from the State Division of Water, so that should be occurring very soon, if it hasn't already.
Okay.
All right, yeah.
All right.
Good work, all of you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, Inordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Womack Excavating LLC for the Removal, Disposal, and Cleanup of All Debris at 3100 Central Avenue in the Amount of $38,900 for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Someone.
Second.
I think I heard a second.
Synchro-nation is really working out here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the Amount of $544,250 for an air trailer, SCBA, brush truck, trench technician course, and elevator course for the Ashland Fire Department.
Someone.
Second.
There is a cellphone outage, but it sounds like somebody is able to get a call. All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, Inordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Codification Agreement Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and American Legal Publishing, LLC for the Codification of All Ordinances Adopted by the City of Ashland and Including a Legal Review of All Materials to Be Codified to Resolve Conflicts with State and Federal Statutes and Administrative Regulations, Repealed, Renumbered, or Obsolete State and Federal Statutes and Administrative Regulations, Apparent Conflicts with Prominent Federal Case Law, and Internal Discrepancies Such as Duplications, Ambiguities, and Obsolete Terminology in the Amount of $29,750.
Someone.
Second.
Lot going on in that one.
Yeah, and we have to pay $29,000 for all those words.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item I, reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Revision to the Retainer Agreement with the Law Firm of Napoli Scholonic P L L C Regarding the Contingency Fee Payment Schedule for the Legal Representation by Their Firm of Contamination of Water Supplies by PFAS, PFOA... I'm not even going to try to say what actually is... for the Department of Utilities.
Someone.
For Ro alcohol. Second.
Just want to comment on that. That is not something that's specific to our water system. That is a nationwide issue that is a result of federal legislation or...
Of course.
Yeah, of course, and regarding these... to these PFAs and PFOAs. So, we're just doing our part to make sure our citizens are protected, but if there is instances where there could be contamination, that we get money back from the entities that contaminated those sites. And did I say that succinctly enough?
Yeah, it's essentially a class action, much like the opioid type stuff.
And you'll see cities across this nation also participating in these opportunities. It's similar to the opioid settlement where we were able to receive money back into the community and put it towards efforts to fight that. We would expect the same thing to be done if we were able to receive any monies in regards to this. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Item J, the mayor requests the board's concurrence on the reappointment of Michael Sexton to the Public Arts Council for the three-year term, March 12, 2024 through March 12, 2027.
Someone.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item K, the mayor requests the board's concurrence on the appointment of Jim Maggard to the Public Arts Council to fill an unexpired term from February 22, 2024 through March 12, 2025.
Someone.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, I ask that we have a motion for executive session to discuss an individual personnel matter?
Someone.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We're bringing all over each other.
These people know it's not scripted.
But it's like we haven't done this before.